Well, I appreciate you coming on. I appreciate your input. Appreciate the government even though you weren't here last commission meeting. We've had probably helped out calls today, but if you're here tonight, I really appreciate it. First of all, I'll start with a couple of questions. The agreement that was executed August, I believe it was sixteen eighteen one, the error of the agreement that was executed. Why was it, why was it that at that point in time?
Which one?
The one in August twenty eighteen.
That was because of the raising the contribution rate. If you looked at the one in two thousand and six, which was originally drafted before I was appointed, it was not a written dollar amount assessed on the interlocal agreement. So when that dollar amount was raised, I felt necessary to update the agreement to get one on file because State nine one one also requested to have a copy of it on file. There was no change in the language. There's no change in any part of the interlocal agreement.
The language, it indicated it has been in effect for three additional years, I believe. Do you not consider that changing language?
It also states automatically renewed every year. So even if, even if it's before after three years, it's still automatically renewed. I didn't change any of the language.
That verbage was not even prior to the agreement?
Uh, it should have been. I didn't change anything.
It wasn't, it wasn't in the, uh, consent.
It should have been because I didn't change it.
I've been stating for another year from the place like this.
Should have been three years and then four years out of the time.
Uh, well, regardless, I'll, I'll tell you this, based upon TCA code twelve dash nine dash one on eight concerning here local agreements must be authorized by the government body of each party to the contract of this station in the county. City nine one one board, and it certainly was not authorized to approve by the county commission.
It was discussed during the budget committee meeting.
But that's not approved in your end of agreement, the chief executive day of August twenty eighteen.
The only reason I waited until that date was to see if it was approved by the county commission and there was no change in the rate. That's why I was updating when I called it.
No, sir, that, that, that's.
Thank you for clarification.
That's, that's a strange interpretation of what the government body of the name approved. Oh, that agreement did not come before the commission to be read or identified as verbiage in over the two fourteen being committed in that number of years.
County attorney at the time stated it didn't happen because there was no change in the language of the agreement. Just updating for clarity for state nine one one.
And, and what source do you have that supports the guy who said that?
Just perfect. They received a copy of it. It's updated before it finally signed.
Signed August twenty four, two thousand and eighteen. Mike Gannon, Anthony Dedden, John Mayer, and Kevin from somebody else.
Again, the code said Haskeman was the law for the commission to approve and say that the layers of either the party, locked that commission based on something that was, I'm sure you've not changed. We'd be highly suspect at that.
Thank you question is hand is not so much the, the language of the looking or of the agreement as if this commission chooses to reduce funding to the nine one one district. The state has to notify within ten days. Now we'll be able to put on the state agenda to speak with the state and how to continue to give nine one one services since the county county. Part of that discussion will be the county commission on how we're going to maintain that service. The bigger part of nine one one services is the dispatching side. I've explained that numerous times.
Yes, sir, I, I.
So if you're saying that the agreement is valid, that when you go back to the visiting, that, that's a different discussion. If you reduce funding, then that starts a whole act with the state being nine one one.
You know, Mr. Jim.
Not if I want or you want, it's what they will.
You know, Mr. Jim Barnes?
I do.
And who is?
He's a financial advisor for T C C.
And who's a Mr. Jim Barnes? I, I'm sorry, Mr. Curtis.
He's an executive director of T C C. I spoke with him today.
Yes, sir, I spoke with Butterfly's. Uh, had a, had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Barnes. Had a good conversation with Mr. Curtis. And of course, from their perspective, even though you indicate flying fly of tense power, it's not that flying fly. In fact, they would come, would be sent down to lead them running to see what actually in would be taken by the, in Barnes, where the commission would find the services. I asked if from the standpoint that those counties combined their services, since they use one of the things that already counted, they identified as being distressed. Is our county distressed?
No, it is not. Under the old law, being of those of distressed, if you have three years of negative net assets, then you would be deemed distressed. That law changed two and a half years ago, three years ago, where if you were negative net assets because of depreciation, not operational costs, you were not distressed, but they monitored your financial activities coming forward meetings. These minutes are submitted to them on a regular basis. So we are not considered distressed. We are at risk. We're no longer distressed. Before, if you were concerned, if you were deemed a distressed district, the state board could come in, consolidate, and a number of things to try to maintain nine one one operations in the county.
You know what's called a watch list, Sergeant?
You call it a watch list, yeah. But we're not distressed.
That's what they're called, a watch list. And just watching, he had been attending through board meetings.
Yeah.
He wasn't better pitch on back for a job well done financially. He was there for a guy with a financial plan.
Exactly right.
So the situation involved in nine one one is certain something to be concerned about financially, isn't it?
Yes, it is. That's why I asked the county for any increase in contribution, just as I did the city three years ago.
Yes, and last year.
Which you said there's a cash flow problem nine one one. I agree there is because of depreciation, but then to say you're going to cut sixty seven thousand dollars.
Well, from your, from your.
That makes a wrong even more. That makes no sense.
From your insurance standpoint, you're correct, you own well. From your contribution to your retirement plan, you're correct, you own your own. And the reason why you own well is what?
There was no reason to stay at, at courthouse. You're arguing overtime records to decide on the nine one one board of directors. And the only thing keeping us there was the retirement and the medical. Now that we no longer have that issue anymore, there's no reason to pay for the state or courthouse.
But from your employee status, what, what do you think your employee status in relationship to the county?
They're not county employees. They're nine one ones.
And when was that determined?
Two thousand and six. We didn't realize it until the T C R S auditor noted that we could not continue to contribute as county employees, but because we're not employees of the nine one one district. Also, I reached out to wage and hour. They stated that, because we don't even have an ongoing issue with the overtime. So they established that we are not county employees. So it doesn't affect wage and hour like we used to prior to, to last of two thousand and seven.
Martin, you and I had a conversation on this, and it all started from a perspective of that you're not an overtime being paid is substantial. And substantial compared to your other districts or whatever they are classified as in relationship of being the person that you tell.
Quite my argument for the, the maintaining the overtime. I even found this out about a year ago. Two other counties have extremely high turnover rates for nine one one dispatch. They pay very well, have a good pay rate. But when I asked them why they're having such a turnover, they didn't really know. We got to talk about scheduling, and they knew the twelve hour schedule, that we get. They stated that they don't pay the overtime at the end of, when they reach that overtime threshold, they send them home. And it's consistent from district to district to do that. They can't keep employees. And we've took, taken a look at if we can come up with eight hour shift, ten hour shift, a leave a day, a mandatory overtime. The problem with the overtime is not the regular overtime. If anything over forty hours, it, they typically get seventy six hours straight time, eight hours overtime if they work their full schedule. When you have F M L A, sick time, leave, maternity leave, and you're finding coverage, we try to offset that with part nine work out of other counties. We don't have that. The system's still got to maintain.
But your overtime, uh. How much hours, I put my hands on it real quick.
Last year was fifty thousand five forty seven, six thousand eight thousand.
Yeah, we're basically thirty, thirty four thousand five.
Martin, hold on a minute. Yes, that fifty thousand dollars.
Well, then is there a suggestion of impropriety in this? It's just asking questions.
You're arguing the overtime rate and, and what we budgeted and it is amended, and that's determined by the nine one one board of directors. I understand it's a concern at county level, but I have no intention of your rate changing, your contribution changing nine one one for at least three years.
No, sir, but.
One of the things we're working on state level is increasing that nine one one surcharge that we mentioned earlier. If that comes through, that's going to eliminate the need even further for years to come from having to ask the county for any more funding. It's just a contribution record you stated during the last meeting, and you don't see those payroll numbers in it. It's just a contribution. That's what it is.
Mr. Barnes was not to underestimate that. You're increasing rate for nine one one.
What do you mean by he's not?
Just was, I asked the D, they have a big chance of getting approval into the legislation to be always involved or whatever.
I'm not saying it's guaranteed, but we've, we've had ninety percent support statewide. We've never had that kind of support. So we feel confident that it's going to be able to make it through the Tennessee legislature. I can't say yes, it's going to. But you're trying to make cuts now. It's going to directly affect the funding stream across the board.
And.
When nine one one is trying to push forward and find additional revenue bringing in this county.
In relationship to your overtime, and this is the data from the state as twenty seventeen year, ours was at thirty six, two oh three. Van Buren, twenty four, seven ninety eight. Jackson, thirty four, five oh one. San Ponce, twenty eight, eight ninety seven. Fitzpatrick was fourteen, nine sixty five. So that's when I, when I got this, and I believe this information you provided too. I never had no, left no source to put my hands on it, but anyway, that being said, that's when I just started listening to the overtime side of the fence and just saying, you know, goodness, I just think a lot of money in relationship to salary as well as in comparison to other counties similar to our size. Uh, so with that being said, that's when commissioners asked for data came to light, and no one was picking on her as quote unquote the owner getting overtime paid, as I stated last time. The point that was made was she was being considered an employee of two departments in the county. And as such, when she incurred thirty two hours under your employment, all hours over that were the overtime rate.
With her schedule, that's when she is scheduled at thirty two hours. The, the extra overtime that she is incurred is because she volunteered to come in and we needed staff to go. And the reason I said that by us is, name the other two dispatchers that have the highest overtime levels in the county. Have you got that?
Roy, I, I, I wasn't even going there, so there was no concern, Martin. My concern, and you verified, the conversation you and I had one on one, had to do with the fact that she was working for two different departments in this county, and therefore, you and her work in forty hours of the number of hours she worked, which based on the school was estimated, estimated being with eight hours driving school bus. That's where your thirty two hours came into play.
Yes.
For the forty. And you and I had that one on one conversation. Okay, so that's where it came from. Had nothing to do with her getting overtime versus anyone else. It was the fact that she was incurring overtime with her driving a school bus because of the hours that had to be considered as an employee of the board of education. And not picking on Karen, I did not call her out from the overtime versus anyone else, is because she was unique from that perspective. Now, with that being said, based on the comments you brought in stages, my question to the, your chairman of the board last week, or the week before, and my question to you is this. Knowing that she did not qualify as quote unquote an employee of two different departments, why was she paying overtime above the thirty two hours? Why did overtime kick in, I call it, other employees at forty hours? Since she was not an employee of two different departments as far as the law was concerned.
Because at the time, they were under the impression that they were county employees. And the definition from Mr. Jim Barnes was wage and hour is because payroll was at the courthouse. We had to shuffle this county employee based on the payroll. So that was the final determining factor in getting payroll out of the courthouse. So we are totally separate, similar to the municipality. We have a separate governing board that makes the decision on budget, budgeting and payroll.
And I'm, did I know all to get overtime for anything over thirty two hours?
No, now that we're doing payroll, it's forty hours, we like everybody else.
How many employees do you have eligible for overtime?
We have nine full time employees.
That are eligible to get overtime?
Yeah.
If they work over forty hours.
But the number's that.
Uh, Roy, in your overtime, thank you.
Hold on a minute.
Yes.
Uh, Roy, in your email that you shared the information, the county auditor stated over two years ago that nine one one employees are not employees of the county since July of two thousand and seven. They could not be represented as county employees.
Yeah. But for payroll, because payroll was in the courthouse, we had to still factor in the wage and hour overtime. It's taken two years to get that separation and clarification to state nine one one and the wage and hour.
It seems.
I wish it could have been sooner, but that's nothing I can do about it. We had gotten hit past for prior overtime when we first come to dispatch two thousand and seven. We thought that our overtime was in. From the time I was appointed February first, two thousand and seven, until July first, two thousand and seven, the interlocal agreement went ahead. We had, we thought we had the overtime extension like the sheriff's department correction. But a complaint was filed and it turned out we were not exempted because dispatch was considered clerical and not law enforcement. So the sheriff's department had to pay thirty five hundred dollars back overtime because of that stipulation of wage and hour. So it's things like that that's happened over the years. It's important to get the payroll out so it's a separate governing body. The overtime was legitimate. All right, I agree. I have a duty to the citizens of this county to maintain the nine one one service regardless of who calls that, seeing whether people are on maternity leave and the shifts happen, you may, I would like it. We try to pull in part time from other counties so we have a straight time rate. Last year was not bad as other years, but I have a duty to the citizens of this county to maintain them both.
Roy, when you pulled out your retirement plan and set it up separate, that would be a clear, absolutely definitive that those employees are not employees of the county.
But as far as wage and hour is concerned, as long as payroll was at the courthouse, we would have to pay the overtime. That was per wage and hour. And their statement was they didn't care who was paying it. If we could pay it, the school system can pay it, somebody can pay it. But if they had to come down and audit our records, then we'd be paying back overtime plus a fine.
And, and, and you say wage and hours is, is the one that gave that definitive answer, correct?
Yes.
And, and, and what department or who did you deal with on that?
Directly, I'd have to go back to my father, but I get you that contact information.
Because it, it seems like we, we're playing in two different arenas, which by law doesn't make sense.
Oh, the only reason my payroll needs to come out of the courthouse.
Because it sure, because it sure looks like on the surface, we paid overtime, we, copy over, this county paid overtime, but it's not justified.
I think it's justified when I had shifts covered. The person that the under名.
I'm talking about the carry to, I always go, is that overtime that's being paid because two departments being employed of the same person. I'm not talking about the need for overtime. I'm talking about the need for overtime being saved on employees plus by working for two different departments. But you're saying everything except one thing, that they're not county employees. But because of this one thing, yes, they were a county employee too, and that just doesn't sit right from a standpoint of having both ways.
But you're arguing a point that we have resolved as of July first of this year, payroll was out of the courthouse, so that's no longer an issue. But you're still, still arguing.
No, I'm not arguing. I'm asking questions to try and give correct information.
I'd be like to beat my dead horse. Do you think there's been some kind of fraud?
Absolutely not. All I'm doing is asking for it to try to get answered.
I just wanted to clarify that, sir. You don't think there's been any fraud? Well, what we're talking about seems to me to be something that you, if you're this passionate about it, maybe go with nine one one board and have this discussion there. Because we're on a budget, and this ain't got nothing to do with the budget.
Well, it has a huge thing to do with that.
Well, no, because you've done resolve the issue that he has talked about. So there is no more, there is no more overtime. So you've done resolve.
I have to work forty hours like everybody else does now.
So looking for one.
We're, we're, we're talking about an event that caused this to be increased by forty nine thousand dollars, and partly increased that forty nine thousand had to do with the expenses to recover, which is payroll and.
I understand, but, but that's yesterday, and there ain't nothing I can do about yesterday.
Oh, well, but, but the two fourteen that's been as for this year is on the table. And that includes forty nine thousand dollars.
Of overtime?
Well, it includes forty nine thousand covered silence and overtime.
Well.
Because that's what we pay as a county.
Our married kids are our boys' kids, and it's still overtime.
All I'm saying, Corey, is if it's defined that they were employees of the county, that's fine. If it's defined that not employees, it wasn't employees of the county, that means we even overpaid more than should be.
Well, again, I think that's something that if, if that's the case, there's going to have to be somebody that digs into that, figures that out, because we can't do it at this time. And we're going to spend an hour on this, and our accomplished time.
Well, all I know is you got forty nine thousand dollars on the table that a decision has to be made on, and that is driven by a salary that over.
Mr. Chairman, that's what Paul.
Yeah.
Actually, I think you're arguing, what, sixty seven thousand? Because you're arguing off of the T C S difference between the nine one one rate versus county.
No, no, I, I, I had the paperwork that says that y'all changed over in twenty sixteen on, on the town.
That's what you've been mentioning. For the past ten months, I wanted to sit down at the table with all the stakeholders involved and discuss this. We didn't have to have written. But there's still been no meeting, and then again, tries to get rushing through during public committee.
Well, I can't speak to what has occurred, has occurred in the past.
I can't.
All, all I would say, Roy, is this. If I'd been appointed to and known that that inner local agreement had been executed in August of twenty eighteen, I would have been knocking on your doorstep. Didn't know it until a week and a half, two weeks ago, before I had, Diane had said, right, you can't reduce the two fourteen, you can't reduce the two fourteen. It's agreement, agreement. I said, show me the agreement. And she called, I said, here it is. And why I could have failed over it before, because I needed to enter before the commission. So I would have been on your doorstep if I had known that was the difference.
I wish you had. Go ahead, Kim.
When reading the contract, what I'm saying is, is that it renews every four years the order. And it stated that, it said, all they renew every four additional terms of four years each without limit. And I understand that. But then it says, any party may withdraw from agreement by providing written notice to each of the other parties in no less than a hundred and ninety days' time to the end of the term. I just wondered if that.
We're not withdrawing from the terms, which is a one hundred and eighty good days.
Yeah, you're withdrawing from this agreement to start the new agreement by contract. And I would like a lawyer to look at the contract.
I, what's that?
Well, if, if that had been prior to one to go to one step, uh, more now, getting assistance, they ain't getting to look at.
Well, they only analyze from what Chris said.
Well, it sounds like maybe there's been some kind of, or a maintenance suspicion of criminality. You know, but it, it seems like anytime you ask questions to try and get answers, it becomes a, a case unbelievable. That somebody's laying top, somebody's against, somebody's got it out for somebody, somebody's helping with someone else. And it just, it just seems so asinine.
I agree with you.
All it does is try to ask questions to get answers. That's all the world. And for somebody who just gets, hey.
That's why I asked you to write. And you answered my question, so I'm good with what you got to say.
And all I'm saying is that if the place listed the contract is not legal, it may still be written on it. It's all weird.
I think the question too has to be asked. If we're not going to pay the forty nine thousand like you're saying, then from what I'm understanding, you're saying that it's more than likely it's going to be done back over to the sheriff's department.
Dispatch does. There's numerous things that can happen. We're going to redo the interlocal agreement in time, not in opposition to what's allowed. I want communications, the cost of communications coming off the table. Nine one one is not even coming in that county. The cost of T C I C T V I has nothing to do with nine one one. That's law enforcement. They go out to pay for drug seizure, bring in revenue that comes into general fund. That doesn't trip back to us, but we're doing transactions. And it's been my argument with the city council, that they go out to additional traffic stops, bring in revenue, but we're doing the transactions. We don't get none of that. We got the highway, governor's highway safety office, a grant that pays for overtime. I've asked to be included in that to pay the dispatches. They're running the transactions, then we go out and bring in that additional revenue. Now that trip back up, but we're putting the bill for it. So if we need to redo the interlocal agreement, then we need to look at multiple things. T V I fees, we got private property lease here, it needs to be redone April. I don't know what it's going to go up, it ain't going to go down. My plan of action is get them towers tore down and move the city property, so there is no reoccurring cost. But it takes some, some foresight in coming up with a plan of action.
If we're not going to pay the forty nine thousand, then we're not going to look at that one as two costs to share, to take this process back up, because we're going to flip that field one layer at a time.
Well, and, and I'll, I'll always speak from this perspective. The research I've done, and, and I think, and Roy, you're correct, I'm wrong. Based on the agreement that the financial situation of your nine one one, it's not moving at positive rate unless you get that passed with the additional surcharge on mobile phones. If that comes in being, that wouldn't be additional revenue for you.
Okay, and that's worth the progress, it takes time.
It does. But if it does, it will apply.
Well, then we'll address it at that point, and we can say what if all day long. But we're actively pursuing to bring revenue into this county. You're acting like you don't want me to. As a county commissioner, you should be fully in support of that.
And, and, and this, uh, what? I apologize.
You can go ahead.
I, I was speaking.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, so Roy, your, your revenue, cash wise, your cash wise, is going down.
I agree.
Okay, so if your cash is going down, forget all this revenue depreciation and reserve requirements for revenue, uh, for, 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 I'm sorry, forget all that, the ninety two thousand, just, just swap it off the slate. But your actual cash is going down, your ending cash balance on six thirty is going down. And if you don't get this additional revenue off of these sales called mobile phones, that's not going to improve unless you magically accomplish more funds. So all I'm saying is absolutely you should look off the heart at what you're doing versus what your job description or functions of nine one one should be doing. Because if you're picking up cost of other departments, if you don't have money to pay, then that's the first place you want to be looking to say, okay, guys, I got to turn this up.
Well, and that's exactly part of the position of state nine one one board, that other group, the directors of the state board that we mentioned, they think that they're paying nine one one districts too much and offsetting the cost of county government. There was an example given in East Tennessee, dispatch centers in the sheriff's department, they were trying to get the nine one one board to fund an S R O vehicle, an S R O payroll. And you can't. But it comes down to county government expecting nine one one to pay for more than what they're supposed to. If you base it on nine one one calls, like I stated before, sixteen percent of our calls are nine one one calls. Everything else is admin, law enforcement, calls for service. It has nothing to do with nine one one. And that's what some of the state board directors have already agreed that it needs to be something they need to take a closer look at in the budgets to come. Because they were against the nine one one surcharge increase because of that. But we don't have a choice but to add force to the needle, because I know as a county commissioner, you can't budget for any more in the future. For a long time, that's my goal as director, to be able to find different places. Chief, remember having asked this county for a dime or?
Well, I, I, I apologize for that. I would apologize to look hard at your numbers of what is in, in your arena of what you should have been occurring. And other things that are not, the costs associated with that, to say, God, I, I gotta turn this up, get a fourth paper on it. I refer to you with that, because you're covering for other departments that should, should not be there, and it's giving you the financial trouble more and more for you to try and thin and come over where this money will come from, if actually you've got two sources. And that's the nine one one and the county seat. Whatever else comes, it's sort of windfall for you.
Well, this is a state line five. This is, this is not a county county issue. You're not the only one who could have had.
And that was something I, I appreciate, Mr. Barnes, and my special with him, but now this is becoming commonplace. The nine one one is really starting to struggle. It's not one county that issues going on like.
But it's because county government is not coming up the car with the maintenance of effort that everybody else is recognized. Why is nine one one not being recognized?
Well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that we are leading our maintenance of it in Kansas, yes.
We are now, yes, I agree.
Yes.
But now you want to go.
Well, and again, it came from the direction, Roy, of my understanding and the test, in that process last year, that that was a one time shock. It was beyond an ongoing quote unquote necessity for nine one one operations. And that's why I really was stunned when I saw the inner local government agreement that locked us in for three more additional years or seven months. And that, again, and as I stated last time, and I would state that, that was just riding the habits of opinion and perception of how that went down, actually.
And you're wrong, because it wasn't interpreted as a one time thing.
Well, and again.
Reoccurring, that's how it was proposed. You misunderstood. I'm sorry, I can't go any further.
Well, and, and I'll say this. If it came before the commission, with, with the actual agreement could have been read by the commission, I believe there'd be a conversation on that time of it being for three additional years. I believe it would. I don't believe that was understood in any form or fashion, but what was transferred. that was understood in any form or fashion, but what was transpired.
I would like to say, the, the equipment that, that's at nine one one, when we were dispatching at the sheriff's department, there was two dispatchers, and we had two computers per center.